I'd like to call to order the Regional City Council meeting for Tuesday, July 9, First order on the agenda, invocation by Pastor Christopher Brown, Friendship Tabernacle of Ole Miss Church, 8658 Friendship Church Road, Reedsville. Pastor Brown.
Lord, we just thank you for this second, this minute, this hour. And, Lord, we just thank you for allowing us all to come together one more time. We thank you for keeping us safe throughout the day. Lord, we ask that you continue to watch over us throughout the day and the days to come. Lord, we just thank you for everything being in decent and in order. In your Son precious name we pray. Amen.
Could we all rise with the pledge?
No. Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to deviate from the norm just for a moment. We have a special presentation that may have been made at the end. We're going to make it at the very beginning.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are very excited this year to be able to announce our Employee of the Year. This young lady is our Assistant Finance Director, and she has been with the city for 35 years. She embodies the values of the City of Reedsville and the team atmosphere in which we've created. I am so honored and humbled to recognize Ms. Rochelle Tucker. If you'll please come up, Mayor, if you'll come up as well. I believe we've got a special medallion since Ms. Tucker. And the members will be in our specially painted hallway. And then, so we just want to tell you thank you and turn it over to Mayor, Council, if you've got any remarks for this remarkable lady's career here. Congratulations.
Many of you might not know, but her name is Linda. Linda is very special, and she means a whole lot to the City of Reedsville. She does more here and on the street than she does anyplace else for the City of Reedsville. She's a big cheerleader for the city, and we're looking for 35 more years. Anyone else?
Certainly. It's so, so deserving, and we really do thank you for what you do because you put your heart into what you're doing. Your heart is in this city, in this yard, and in the community. And just thank you because you're a blessing to so many people.
Hey, sis, I just want to say thank you. We call each other brother and sister. Rochelle was all over the place, and not only working for the City of Reedsville, but tremendous work at our church, NAACP, all of the different organizations. I love you, girl. Thank you all.
I'm going to be your brother, too.
And Rochelle, you have been such a good friend, not only to all the employees that you have worked with, but for citizens. People just see you on the street, they recognize you, they appreciate you, they love you, and we appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Congratulations. Appreciate you.
Next order on the agenda will be the approval of the consent agenda. We have four items. Do we have anyone that'd like to pull one of those four for discussion? If not, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next item will be a public hearing. Consideration of an application to rezone the property located at 2025 US 29, Rockingham County Platte Book 1666, Page 1728, from a current split zoning designation out of Industrial 1, Industrial 2, and Residential 20 to Industrial 2. The property owner is Jerry Barker, submitted the application, docket number Z 2024-03, enclosure 1, Jason Harden Planting Community.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. Good evening. Reedsville Equipment is petitioning to rezone a recently recombined parcel, Rockingham County Register of Deeds, Platte Book 1666, and Page 1728. The parcel has an area of 4.79 acres, and existing equipment supplied or air business operates on the property. The existing water service is available, where the main located in the right-of-way US 29 business. The closest sewer main is around 800 feet north along US 29 business. The proposed rezoning eliminates the existing split zone lot that was created by a recent instrument of combination. The rear portion of the lot is on I-2, and it was part of the Reedsville industrial park. Some of you, I'm sure, may remember back in 2000, the City of Reedsville issued a special use permit for the land. It was planned for the Reedsville industrial park, requiring specific design standards for the businesses and industries that opened on the land in the industrial park. It created a special use district. This is a method that we don't go to use anymore in planning and zoning. North Carolina General Statute 160D actually converted any existing special use district into a conditional zoning district. So as of now, the industrial park is a conditional zoning industrial district. So that's what it is at present time, just by the statute. Conditional zoning districts, as we know, may have stricter regulations than usual standard heavy industrial zoning and specific design standards for that zoning district. So when this instrument of combination was done, it actually took in a piece of property that used to be a part of that land. So now those regulations are on the back part of the lot. You've got light industrial on the central and southern portion, and then you've got RA 20, or R 20, I think it is, on the northern portion of the lot. So three different zoning designations on one lot. So the proposed rezoning to heavy industrial does eliminate that existing split zoning. The property is located in Growth Management Area 4. This is the rural area, which encompasses the area that's east, southeast, and north, and northwest of the city. Long Growth Management Area 4 does suggest limited development. It does not exclude it. It's more of like a, the fringes of the city where you don't see a lot of development, but none. So staff does find that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the 2022 Reedsville Land Development Plan. We find that it's reasonable in the public interest, and the planning staff does recommend that the proposed rezoning be approved. The planning board unanimously recommended that the proposed rezoning be approved as well. And I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, sir. So now, all of the area that's encompassed within that yellow will be the same? It will be zoned all the same?
Yes, ma'am. They're petitioning to rezone it to straight heavy industrial I-2. So then it'll be one zoning designation on the entire lot.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Jason, the public hearing will open at 6:09. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak for the rezoning? Barker, would you like to speak?
I'll answer any questions, Jason, before you go ahead and run.
Come on up. Name and address.
Yeah, I'm Jerry Barker, owner of the 2025 Business 29, and asking for the combination to be under one zone. I'll be glad to answer any questions. It's kind of pretty cut and dry.
If you want to have any questions. Thank you, Mr. Barker.
Just a quick question. What does heavy industrial mean?
How is it going to change?
Jason.
Heavy industrial is obviously your heavier manufacturing uses, those type of things. So your light industrial will be those that don't really produce a lot of, you know, intensity in manufacturing. This is just your most intense heavy manufacturing district.
And it's light industrial now?
It's three different things now.
I know.
It's light industrial, heavy industrial, and residential RA 20.
The reason I'm asking is because we have property directly across the street, and we were just wondering if, how that would affect that property, of course. If it, I mean, heavy industrial sounds rather different than light industrial. I'm not trying to belate. I'm just, just, you know, some bit factor across the street.
And that's just the difference between the two. It's the intensity of the uses a lot in the district.
Just had a question.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against? Seeing none, the public hearing will close at 6:11. Any discussion? We have a motion. And there is a party motion.
I make the motion to recommend the proposed rezoning be approved for the specific parcel to the requested zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonfulness. Determination statements are included in the council agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation and may be amended, incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next item, public hearing, consideration of an application for a consideration of an application for a special use permit to allow a personal service business to operate at 600 West Harrison Street, Reedsville, specifically Rockingham County Tax Parcel Number 149807. The special use application was submitted by Andrea Moore, docket number S 2024-01, enclosure 2, Jason Harden.
Anyone that's planning to speak on this special use permit needs to be sworn in. The way you say about this is the truth, nothing of the truth said without doubt.
A gift card. She mentioned this voice.
Jason.
Andrea Moore has requested a special use permit to allow a personal service. These are hair salons, nail salons, and so forth, and are zoning orders as defined. Specifically, a hair salon to operate at 600 West Harrison Street, Rockingham County Tax Parcel Number 149807. The property is zoned office and institutional, ONI, and the personal services are allowed with a special use permit. Washington Enterprises LLC is the property owner. The abutting lots to the north are R 6 and conditional zoning, ONI. The lot to the east is zoned conditional zoning, ONI, as well, and lots at the south are zoned, ONI, and R 6. The lot to the west is zoned, ONI. The area is characterized by a mix of office and institutional zoning and uses and residential zoning. The subject property is located in Growth Area 2 of the Land Development Plan, which includes a mixture of commercial and residential development. Therefore, a personal service business would be in alignment with the Land Development Plan at this location. The standards and the ordinance for personal services in the office and institutional zoning district are as follows. Three spaces be provided per person performing personal services and one space per employee not performing personal services. Hours of operation are limited to Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and operation on Sunday is not permitted. The council must come to certain findings regarding the impact of the development on the area. These findings, facts, have been provided to you with your council agenda packets. Council must vote favorably for each finding of fact for the special use permit to be issued. The planning staff recommend the following conditions be placed on the special use permit. The use shop implied with the special use criteria for personal services. The planning board did unanimously approve that, but recommend that the proposed special use permit be approved. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Jason?
I just had one, Jason. From the mention that you were just reading from.
Yes, sir.
Where you have hours of operation, and it says Sunday is not permitted.
Yes, sir.
Is that because of the ordinance we have, or is that?
That's correct.
That's because of the?
So the special use, so for special use permits, they may restrict hours of operation specifically as a condition of the special use permit for these uses. And for personal services, no, and I, that is one of the restrictions, is no operations on Sunday. That's under the current ordinance. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
This particular building has been vacant for quite a while, hasn't it?
Yes, to the best of my recollection, I think it was a chiropractic office.
It was.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jason. Public hearing will open at 6:17. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for?
Hey, I'm Andrea Moore, and I am the owner of Midtown Salon and Spa. And we have been in business since 2004 in Reedsville. We were formerly in another location originally across from Pete's Burgers on South Scale Street, and we outgrew that location. We were there for about seven years, and we moved to our current location, 1731 Freeway Drive, Suite F. We've been there for about 13 years. And when the freeway drive, I guess, project changed, it kind of cut us off from freeway drive. We no longer had an entrance. So we were adapted a service road off of Harrison Street. It has, over time, you know, I would say hurt our business a little bit, but being that we've been in business for 20-some years, you know, we've maintained. Our current property was recently purchased, and so we have a new landlord, and they are increasing the rent substantially to something that we just cannot afford. So once we started looking, we looked at several properties in Reedsville, and then we found 600 West Harrison Street. And it seems like a great location. There's a lot of traffic. It's really, really close to our current location, so I think it'd still be, you know, great for our business.
Any questions?
Good luck, and we wish you the best because I've been to your salon. So will this property give you the opportunity to expand?
I don't really feel like we need to expand, per se. Like, you know, what we have now, I mean, we offer hair services, nail services, massages, facials, and we're happy with that. Like, we don't really, we're eliminating tanning from our services, but it's kind of one of those services that's kind of died out anyway, and a lot of people don't use it anymore. Plus, I think there's already two larger tanning salons in Reedsville. So we're not necessarily, I would say, looking to expand. However, the owner of the property, there is a larger parcel of a grassier area, so if, you know, in the future we needed to expand, there is the opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Andrea, speaking as the father of a cosmetologist, I wish you luck.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak for?
Good evening, City Manager, Mayor, Council, Diane Sawyer. Just would like to say, I have had the pleasure of knowing Ms. Andrea for quite some time. I've also visited her salon many times. But I'm really here not just as a friend and as a client, but as a chamber president. I have had the pleasure of kind of holding her hand and walking her through the process that she needed. I just wanted to say that I have been so thankful for the city staff. They have been truly amazing. Andrea found herself looking to purchase property because it's been a dream of hers for a long time, and it just never seems to quite work out. And then she found this really great property, and somewhat into a time issue, where she was trying to figure out how to get out of the old salon and get into the new salon. It didn't, didn't know about the special use permit, but then when we discovered it, we quickly called Jason, called Summer, and they were so tremendous to get her going right down the path that she needed. And I just wanted to say, she has been a salon owner for over 20 years. We are really hoping to celebrate big with a ribbon cutting and an anniversary celebration. She is Midtown, but she started out at Midtown. And I was really sad to see both those developments. I'm so proud of you for, we didn't even talk about that, but she talked about, you know, the freeway drive. That was a big change for them, that they adapted, and I think that they flourished even with that. And then also, you know, it's hard when you end up with a new landlord, and there are just some things that are really out of her control in that building. So I'm proud of her. I think she chose in a perfect location. I think it's going to be great, and I'm really for her salon being there, and I just wanted to show my support publicly.
I think there were only two people sworn in. I don't think there would be anyone who'd have the nerve to speak against at this time. Any other questions? We'll close the public hearing at 6:23. We'll do findings of fact. The first finding, the first finding of fact, that the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located or proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved. All those who believe, raise your right hand. Number two, that the use meets all required conditions and specifications. All those who believe. Number three, that the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or that the use is a public necessity. All those who believe. And finally, that the location and the character of the use is developed according to the plan as submitted and approved will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located, and in general conformity with the comprehensive plan for Reedsville and its surroundings. Those who believe. Okay, the findings of fact have passed, and now we need a motion to approve the special use permit.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Andrea, on occasion, when I visit my daughter's salon, if she's got somebody in the seat and she's cutting hair, I ask them if I can cut. And I tell them that my daddy was a barber for over 40 years. Most of them say, "Your daddy was a barber." Well.
Thank you all. Thank you all very, very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, update on rule-ready diesel drive project, enclosure 3, Josh Beck.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. It's been a long project, for sure. You know, this project has quite a bit of history. It actually started back March 2020, and then I think we all knew that pretty well. But we've worked through a number of hurdles on this particular project. We are nearing the very end of it, and so at y'all's request, I will introduce Mr. Glenn Fleming from Withers Ravenale. He will quickly go through, honestly, even since my memo, a number of things have transpired and been completed. He will touch base on some of those, and then just kind of give you a brief where we head from here. We still have a little bit of work to actually get this closed out. Some things will actually, some additional things will actually happen this week, which I'm sure he will discuss with you. And then between the two of us, we'll gladly answer any questions you may have. Glenn?
Mayor and Council, Manager Woodard, great to see you again. As always, thank you for your time this evening. As Josh indicated, here tonight with a brief update about progress out at the city's rule-ready site utilities project. I think it's a positive update, an exciting update, to say the least. But before we get into that, just a quick recap. It's been a few months since we last spoke about this. Recall, this is the project that's intended to deliver availability of city water and wastewater to the site formerly known as the Horse Park Site. It's the large parcel located just north of Love's at the Terminus and Diesel Drive. Recall, this is largely grant-funded. Seventy-five percent, to be exact, of the project cost is funded by the North Carolina Department of Commerce Industrial Development Fund grant. The remaining 25% is made up of both city funds and county funds. So where we stand today, I'm pleased to report that heavy construction is complete at this point. I think we're about 92% complete by contract value. So the larger elements, the pump station and the culverted creek crossing are now complete. Of late, the contractor has been working on a handful of punch list items, again, associated primarily with the pump station, some of the local stormwater infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure local to that portion of the site, as well as a little bit of cleanup and in treatment on the culvert crossing. At this point, really, the two items will stand between us and offering a recommendation of substantial completion, our completion of a minor water stub to the property line, and resolution of the water quality violation, water quality permit violation that we self-reported on a few months ago. That work is scheduled to begin tomorrow afternoon, barring weather or other delay. I would anticipate it's most likely done by week's end. Be a very similar process to what played out in April of last year, I believe it was, when we reported about an initial water quality violation out there. So we'll have a little bit of work to oversee, or contractor work to oversee over the next few days. We'll document both the existing conditions, the finished conditions of that work, and then after a few weeks, or about three weeks, we'll be back on site to take finished pictures of the finished product, and then we'll go ahead and submit those to the state for concurrence and closeout. So all told, that process took about four to five weeks last time. I would anticipate a similar timeline right now. So hopefully, by mid to late August, at the latest, I think we'll be able to report for you that that matter has in fact been closed. And I will mention, because I did not previously, the contractor did also recently return the fully executed number of return the fully executed number of understanding, uh, between the city and the contractor to cover the additional costs associated with that work. So, um, other items that will continue to be ongoing, uh, in parallel during that timeframe, again, are the water stub out, uh, and some additional miscellaneous punch list items that remain open right now. Mostly those are site cleanup, um, some minor site grading, uh, site restoration items such as that. So again, um, I think we'll probably be in a good place by, by mid-August, I'd like to think, uh, to offer a recommendation of substantial completion to city staff. We'll have a little bit of work to do at that point also, uh, to clean up and closeout erosion control permitting, uh, but again, barring anything unforeseen or significant weather delay, I'd like to think probably, uh, I'd say early to mid-September, most likely, we're back with a recommendation, uh, of final completion, and at that point, project closeout. So, that's everything I had prepared for you to kind of run through about status right now. Uh, as Josh indicated, happy to entertain any questions, uh, about current status or, or anything that we can expect to see, uh, here in the next few weeks.
Any questions?
Yeah, several questions myself. Oh, I can start a rundown by the list. There's, you know, obviously, this project's lasted, uh, this project has lasted for quite a while, and was supposed to have been completed in a sh- shorter amount of time, I think, a year or something. Well, I think, what are we going on, three or four, three years or better of this project?
Correct.
But, so, a few questions I have. One, we've had multiple issues there. I've made some bullet points in terms of my questions, and I can just go through the bullet points. The mayor may not have the answers, but if you don't, I'd like for you to get those answers back to us.
Yeah, I'll answer to the best, uh, my ability tonight. I'll be happy to follow up after the fact.
Question one I have was that, when were we finally gonna get a complete, substantial completion date? But you just answered that, mid-September.
Yes.
Oh, my, I want to know why the project had so many ongoing issues, and what I mean by that is, is we had fine after fine after fine from DEQ, oh, you know, for the contractor. And, so this is kind of a two-part statement or question, I guess I could say. And Withers was the project manager of this project, correct?
Correct.
And I believe we paid you guys $167,055.52, uh, as of to, to date. So, were we on site the whole time, and how did this project get pushed back so far? And how did we continue to incur so many violations over that period of time? And after one or two violations, we didn't get out of control, still continued. So did we have people on site? What, what were we doing for that $167,000? And then I have some questions in terms of the repairs to the walls, so I'll hit you with all of them at one point.
All right, let me see if I can run through all those in, in, in scattershot fashion. Um, in terms of timeline, the, uh, as Josh indicated, I think the project bid in November of 2020, uh, there were five bids submitted at that time. The lowest bid, uh, submitted by Triangle Grading and Paving, and these are round numbers, uh, was $2.2 million, which was well in excess of the city's available construction funding at that time, which I believe was about 1.4 million. Um, so working in conjunction with city staff, uh, there was a, an elongated scope reduction negotiation period in order to work with contractor to get down to a project scope, uh, that really both parties could, could live with or complete, right? Um, I think that process was complete in probably February of 2021. Um, construction contracts and a notice to proceed were executed and dated, I believe, mid-March of 2021. The original construction contract time called for 180 days, calendar days, to substantial completion, 210 calendar days to final completion. Um, I don't have to, to remind everyone, it's easy to forget at this point, but during that time period, we were in the height of the COVID pandemic. Um, the contractor reported and was able to prove substantial delays associated with their ability to acquire certain materials. For that reason, they were credited or have been credited back, uh, a significant, significant number of calendar days that they, they would have been over, uh, the construction contract Regarding your question, and I apologize about missing these, we'll come back to them. Regarding your question about any fines that may have been levied on the site, I don't believe, to my knowledge, there have been any fines levied by the state on the site. There have been two water quality permit violations. Uh, the first occurred in the spring of last year. Um, that was, uh, reported to the state. The state came out and inspected that violation. We proposed, uh, we, being Withers Ravanell, uh, in conjunction with city staff, proposed a solution to that. The state accepted that proposed solution, and that was the, the, uh, permit violation process I just referenced that played out previously, uh, successfully. That issue was cleaned up. Uh, the state offered their, uh, concurrence on that matter, and so that violation was closed, uh, mid-summer last year, I'll say. Um, there was a second similar violation that was noticed in, uh, I believe, late December, possibly early January, uh, where we had some sediment deposition in, in the localized stream channel. The state did not, um, happen on-site to see that. We actually saw that.
Self-reported.
Self-reported, correct. And so that's the process I referenced that will play out, uh, this week in terms of the cleanup. Um, in terms of site oversight, um, you know, per our, our professional services agreement with the city, we are tasked with construction administration and construction observation. Uh, that was intended to be part-time in nature, so we have provided part-time, uh, observation throughout the process, throughout the times that the contractor was mobilized and active on-site working. Um, our original contract, I will say, was predicated upon the originally anticipated 180 calendar days to substantial completion and 210 days to final completion. We're well, uh, beyond that period, we're still active on-site multiple times a week to oversee the contractor. Things, uh, you know, violations of this nature, which are largely related to, uh, sedimentation and control measures, the onus is on the contractor to maintain those. Um, it's clearly stated in the permit documents that they hold and on the construction plans that they're to inspect those on a regular basis, to inspect them immediately before any anticipated storm events and within 24 hours after any storm events and make any repairs necessary. So we do, uh, on a regular basis, inspect the, the condition of those, offer input to the contractor where we see issues or the potential for issues in the making, but again, the onus is on, on the contractor as a permitted entity out there to maintain those.
I don't, I don't disagree with that. So, of the $167,000 that Withers got, did you, who paid for like the drawings, the plans, the blueprint, blueprint stuff? Did, did that come out of this, or was the 167 strictly management fees?
Um, so, apologies, I don't have our full contract value in front of me. I'll take a word that you correct on the 165,000 or so.
Yeah.
That would be our total contract for the project. So, project management, engineering design, permitting, uh, as well as construction phase services, administration, observation, and project closeout, record drawings, et cetera.
Designs, everything was paid for out of that?
Yes, yeah, it'd be all-inclusive. Um, I do know the budget for construction observation, I believe, is a fraction of that, probably in the 20 to 25,000 dollar range.
That's, that's what I was trying to figure out, how much was in there for project management?
I don't know the project management total I can find out for you.
Oh, so obviously, we had the issues with the sediment of the wall. I had a couple of questions I had about that. Uh, now, just, uh, I can read them out. So, uh, was the compaction, was, was all the compaction test, testing completed and passed in conformance with the design, plans, and specifications of the wall?
My knowledge, it was, so Withers Ravanell is not the engineer of record for the wall.
Yes.
The onus is on the contractor to secure a third party to design that. They also secured third-party testing for that.
So do they provide that documentation to you guys at the closeout of this to prove that they, uh, met the obligations of their contract to install the wall correctly and have all these third-party testing done?
Yes, we should have most of that information already in-house as part of our construction observation and inspection, uh, but yes, the onus will be on the contractor if they haven't already provided all that to provide it.
Then you guys will do a thorough review of all these to be sure that we didn't skip a process, where they turn all that in?
Correct. So, everything, uh, you know, material cementals, the wall cemental, that sort of thing, we all, we, we review all of those, uh, for general concurrence with the, uh, construction drawings, permitting requirements of the project, et cetera. So in the case of the wall, drawings or the compaction testing that goes along with that, we would review that, again, for conformance with the construction plans, conformance with the permitted footprint, et cetera. Um, the onus for more in-depth review and ultimately signing off on that, again, falls on the engineer of record for the wall.
Yeah, correct, yeah, he would have to sign up. But I'm saying, since you guys are the project manager, you're going through, making sure that everybody followed all the steps and process.
Correct.
Do you know, so when there was a repair made, obviously, for the wall settled, the pipe came up in the air, were there's, was there a plan review by a third party once this was designed, and a third party looked this over, you know, and say, "Hey, we confer or, or agree with this, with this repair"? And then, I'll follow up with this, uh, was the subgrade under both sides of the wall tested and inspected to ensure there was no saturation of the soil that would cause differential settlements of the wall in the future? You know, we had the saturation coming down, we had to pour the concrete, and did we check both sides of the wall, uh, to make sure that in the future, there's no issues? Or did we focus solely on the one wall that showed signs of failures? Or did we check both sides?
Sure. All right, working through those backwards. To the best of my knowledge, yes, the contractor did have, again, their third-party testing agency on-site. Um, throughout that process, the onus would be on them to test that and provide that documentation primarily to the engineer of record for the wall. But again, Withers Ravanell is your project manager and the one tasked with maintaining, uh, records retention, et cetera, for you.
And you would make sure, so do you know if we tested both sides of the wall and the wall was thoroughly all the way across since we had those undermining issues?
So, I'd have to report back to you on this. Again, to the best of my knowledge, the contractor did have their third-party materials testing agency on-site. They did test, um, uh, the, the base of the wall in the vicinity of the culvert, and as the wall began to extend up the, the creek crossings. Um, your question about third-party, um, review of the, the, I guess, repair to the wall?
Yeah. Who, who came up with the design repair?
Sure. Uh, ECS was the engineer of record for the wall when we did observe that failure of the wall, partial failure.
Yeah.
One side of the wall, and called that attention, that, to the attention of both the contractor and the owner. Uh, the directive to the contractor was that they needed to secure the engineer of record for the wall to come on-site, observe that, and offer, uh, recommendations as to the needed repairs or mitigating actions that needed to be taken. That did happen, and I believe we have one, if not two, uh, signed sealed letters from the, uh, engineer of record for the wall recommending the, the repair method to be undertaken.
And then my other concern, the last concern that I have, is when this is completed, right now, this is private property and sold, but when developed, all of this would be turned back over to the city. The city is, and the taxpayers will then maintain responsibility in the future for this wall, the roadways, but given the issues surrounding the walls and the repairs that are made, does Withers or the engineers or the contractors, is everyone confident enough in these repairs that this is gonna be a lasting wall for the city that we're not rebuilding? And if we're confident in that matter, are all parties involved in this repair and overseeing this project willing to give the city and the taxpayers an extended warranty, you know, on this, on this wall?
Sure. Um, so I'll take those the opposite direction. In terms of, I, I guess, confidence in the integrity of the wall, um, again, we review everything for general conformance with the, the construction documents and the plans.
Yeah.
Um, that's incumbent upon the engineer of record for the wall to ultimately certify that wall, that it was constructed, you know, in accordance with their specifications to the best of their knowledge, et cetera. So they will issue that certification. Um, once we issue or recommend issuance of substantial completion to the city as the owner, when that substantial completion does occur, the one-year warranty period, uh, becomes effective upon that date. So the, the standard warranty period associated with the project is, is one calendar year.
One year, but typically, if you have issues in the construction industry where you have ongoing issues, repairs, uh, that need to be made because there was a failure in something in some form or capacity, an extended warranty is normally offered, you know, uh, to, to cover that. We, we had two parts of failures essentially to this wall that we know of right now on one side, but there's another side of this wall. So my question is, you know, is I feel that the people of Reedsville deserve more than a one-year warranty, because if this fails, given the circumstances around this, this is, would be a costly expense to repair. We're probably talking a million dollars to tear this out and rebuild if we're lucky, you know? So if we're confident in those, whether it be Withers, who accepts those, looks at this and makes the recommendations, if Withers is confident enough to make the recommendation for the city to accept this, is Withers also confident enough to share the responsibility of the repair of that wall in event of a failure?
Again, our review is limited to general conformance with the construction drawings. I think I would have to defer that question back to the contractor and to the engineer of record, uh, for the wall.
Okay, well, if you, if you would, I, I, I think I would appreciate that. I don't know about the rest of the people.
But, yeah, with your permission, I'll be happy to work with city staff, uh, to put that question back to the contractor and the engineer of record.
Well, I think it would, I mean, I, I would say, I would think that would be a good thing, but it would be up to everybody to grant that permission. But I hope you, I hope you would understand that, and do you agree or disagree that when you have issues and contractors and engineers have to make repairs because there was a failure in this design, given the steep slope, we, we had a mistaken oversight in what should have been done in the beginning? So obviously, when you, you went in to make these repairs, you, we've made these repairs, do you, do you not feel that it's an industry standard that additional warranty is provided in issues like that normally?
I think it's strictly dependent on the situation. There is some language to that effect typically in, uh, construction contract documents and your technical specifications related to warranty issues.
Yeah.
Again, in this instance, the engineer of record for the wall was on-site, observed the situation, offered an opinion as to the recommended, uh, repair, and I believe later as to the fitness or the completeness of that repair.
Yeah.
So I, I would have to defer your question again back to the contractor and the engineer of record for the wall.
Yeah, that, that, if you would, if you would ask, if they're, if they're willing to do that, and I feel that that's only fair to the city of Reedsville and the citizens of Reedsville.
Loно.
So that we not facing a burden, you know, sort of repairing this wall in the future. And if it was made correctly, if the repairs were made correctly and we're confident in those repairs, then there's never gonna be a repair that needs to be made, so you're wanting something that you would feel confident that you're never gonna have to spend money on anyways, right?
I'll defer that back to the, to the engineer of record for the wall and the contractor. I think we all recognize home wear and tear in the life cycle of all, the expected life cycle of all infrastructure, right?
Yes, correct. Yeah. Uh, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, thank you, sir. And I will admit that I do not understand this near to the extent that Councilman Martin understands it, but since we had our water quality violations, and that covered sediment in the water, my understanding. So once that's cleared up, what kind of testing is done after that to ensure it doesn't happen again?
So it's sediment deposition in the stream channel. That will be cleaned up and removed by hand by the contractor. Um, we will document, as I said, both the existing conditions and the finished conditions of that cleanup. The state will come in and offer their concurrence to, uh, the fact that it has in fact been done correctly. Um, at that point, or once the, the permits for the site are closed out, um, part of that assumption goes along with that is that the, the site has been stabilized, to the extent possible, turf, matting, seating, et cetera, has taken hold on the site, and so you shouldn't see, uh, similar erosion issues to what we've seen in, in a bare site or a not stabilized site at this point.
So as far as monitoring that, is that something that we would do as a city?
Once these, I'm sorry, once the, once the...
It'll be grass planted, it'll be stable, there won't be any more erosion.
But once the erosion control permitting is, is closed out with the state, the city no longer has an onus to, to, to maintain that or observe that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Next, Mr. Fleming?
Thank you, as always, for your time. Happy to, happy to be here, and as always, happy to answer any questions. I think, uh, Manager Woodard and Mr. Beck have all my contact information. Please don't hesitate to shoot me an email or give me a phone call anytime. I'm always happy to talk. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Next item is with policies. Consideration of revision to the City of Reevesville Information Technology IT policy. Closure four, Sherrell Williams, Information Technology Director.
Good evening, Mayor. Hello, City...
Good evening, Mayor, all City Council members and City Manager Woodard. This event, I would like to discuss some of the updates to the IT, to our IT computer policy that will enhance the security, efficiency, and compliance to our city's digital infrastructure and to ask for your approval to the IT computer policy recommended by myself and the IT staff. I have shared this policy with the management team and the city manager to receive recommendations and suggestions. I know that this policy is enclosed in packets, so I will just highlight the key areas. PCI compliance is payment card industry compliance, and it's for organizations that handle credit card payments. And we have several locations that process credit card payments for the convenience of our citizens and our users, and our customers, excuse me. And many people do not carry cash, as we all are aware of that. But no data is stored from this credit card information on the city service or devices. We have appropriate credentials and authentications in place for the technology transactions. The employees are trained to process all transactions, and all point of sales and equipment is protected and secured so that they cannot be tampered with. Next, we have MFA, which is an alternative authentication, which is a second layer of security to enforce a one-time code for authentication methods when connecting to the city's network. And then our IT badge policy. Every employee is issued or will receive an ID badge, a lanyard, badge holder, and/or belt clip. There is no charge for the first two replacements of, you know, the badge and, you know, the whole setup here. But it is recommended for the third replacement to be a $7 fee to be charged to help replace these items because it is a cost associated with it. And then communication. The policy will be communicated with the assistance of our Human Resource Director through the new employee orientation as well as through our directors, supervisors, and managers. A signed acknowledgement form will be required to ensure employees have read this policy. Thank you for your attention and consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns that you may have.
Any questions, Ms. Williams?
Is the $7 fee, is it only if it's lost or misplaced?
If we have to replace it.
But I'm saying if you have to replace it because it's lost or misplaced. Say if it's lost, it wears out, you know, whatever.
Then it's no fee. Correct. Yes.
Mayor and Council, I'd just like to thank Ms. Williams and her team in the IT Department for doing an exceptional job in bringing this policy forward to make sure that we're operating correctly. So great work on bringing this together. So thank you.
Thank you.
It is definitely very, very detailed.
Excellent job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are no further questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second in the discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Good job.
Thank you.
I'll read this.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, consideration of changes to the wireless facility review fee. Enclosure five, Jason Harden.
Thank you again, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. As you may be aware, the City of Reevesville utilizes a engineering consultant for plan review, construction, and repair for wireless facilities, cell towers. As is common practice among local governments, due to the specialized nature of reviewing the construction plans for these facilities, our previous consultant that we've been using since 2013 retired at the end of May 2024, which led us to have to search for a new consultant to fill this role for the city. And this community of plan reviews was small, so it was no small task to try to find another engineer who can do this kind of plan review. They're far and in between, honestly. One thing, there's kind of two sections here. So in my memo, there is a reference to the 1987 Mini Brooks Act, and so that's kind of the exemption on the procurement. The state law does require us to document this in writing, so I'll briefly go over that. And then there is the increase to the fee. So there's kind of two sections there, kind of combined two things into one there. So the 1987 Mini Brooks Act, North Carolina General Statute 14364.31, requires local government to use a qualification-based selection QBS process for procuring engineers and architects and so forth. But this would be like an RFQ, RFP, that type process for construction management and at-risk services without regard to fees or total price other than the unit cost information. But however, there is an exemption if the total cost is less than $50,000 for the project. The city can exempt itself in writing from the requirement for an RFQ for this process. So we do find that the city is exempt from the Mini Brooks Act procurement standards as each project will be no more than, on the page, no more than $8,000 for new tower review and no more than $1,000 for co-location or modification to existing facilities. So each project will be well less than $50,000. So Citiescape Consultants, Inc., they're the consultant that we have found and were the contract to. Citiescape's co-location review fee is on par with what we charge currently, which is $1,000, and that is actually limited by the general statute. They can't charge any more than that, so we don't have to increase that fee. So the consultant's review fees are passed along to the applicant only. So there is no fee to the city to contract with them. It's only when someone comes in with a project, which would be like a, you know, these are multimillion and billion-dollar corporations doing these projects. So whenever they come in to say, I want to do a, more commonly a co-location than a new tower, we haven't seen one of those built around here for a while, and then they would come in, they would pay the fees, and then it would, they would review it and send their reports to staff. So there is no fee for us to contract with them. So the proposed fee increases that we have align with Citiescape's required fees for plan review. Our previous fee for new wireless telecommunications facilities was $3,500. The new fee is actually $8,000. This includes $6,500 standard fee. This includes one public hearing for them to attend. And our ordinance says required to go before the planning board, so they charge an extra $1,500 for an additional, for any additional public hearing. So that combines the cost for them to go to the planning board and to come to City Council to discuss the details of the project, because those do have to typically go before planning board for approval when it's a new facility. So there's also a couple of other things that we don't have currently that they do review for, but we definitely probably need to add to it, such as non-eligible facilities. These are facilities where the expansion or changes exceed 98%, which you don't really see these a lot typically, a co-location is just a small modification to the existing tower. We get maybe about three of them a year, but they do exist. And the fee for that would be $4,000. And small wireless facility review, which is a new technology, which are towers that are less than 5 feet tall. You can actually see these in the right-of-way in some cities. Nothing's made of these way around here like that yet, but you never say never mind at some point. But the review fee for that is $500. So we are asking for council approval on this item to increase these fees for our new consultant. I'll be glad to answer any of your questions as always.
Thank you, sir. How many tower reviews do we do a year?
Like I said, we haven't had a new facility, a brand-new tower, built in several years. I think like back around maybe 2010, maybe, or maybe even further back than that, maybe around 2007 was the last brand-new tower that we had built. Now, for what they call co-locations, what that means is it's like a repair or an expansion, like they're adding an antenna, they're doing some kind of improvement to the existing tower. That's what we typically get, which is the $1,000 fee for review. So that's what we only, that's what we typically get. So yeah, that's the majority of it.
So our last tower, was that the 10158, your freeway job?
It could be. I would have to check. That was, it was a while back, so.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? All right. Do we have a motion for the wireless facility review fee increase? We have a motion and a second.
There was two people motioned, I think.
With it.
Yeah.
In the discussion. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Yeah, thank you.
I think it was also asked that I bring up the dates for the UDO. Do we want to do that now?
Okay.
So as we discussed in our two-on-twos, you know, we were asking to have a September meeting with council, another work session to just discuss items on the UDO and look over the drafts that we'll have by then after the two steering committee meetings in July and August. So I think we're proposing September the 18th, starting at 3 o'clock. Would that work for council?
Good with me. We're saying July 18th?
September. September.
Yes.
All right. Good with you, Lee.
That's good.
All right. So we'll get that set up. Thank you very much.
What was the time, is that what you were saying?
Starting at 3 o'clock.
Okay.
We do have planning board that night, so we'll do like 3 to 5, and then we'll have to stay for planning board that night if there's a meeting that month, which there probably will be.
I heard through the grapevine that we might get fired that night.
Anything's possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. It's time for public comments. Do we have anyone who would like to come before council? Three minutes. Okay, sitting down, we'll move on to managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a couple announcements under personnel. So this month, we had two retirements in engineering. We had our civil engineer, Mr. Richard Vaughn, who officially retired on June 28th. He was with the city for 20 years. So we want to wish Richard a happy retirement and thank you for all your hard work. And then also in our fire department, our administrative fire captain, Mr. Ricky Higgins, who was also instrumental in serving on our Employee Relations Committee, retired on July 1st. And he was with the city for 23 years full-time service and five years his part-time service. So Ricky, best of luck. So thank you for all your dedication. Just a couple updates, projects and city updates. I did want to brief council. I know last month on our agenda, we had an inter-local agreement with the City of Greensboro in reference to our water service agreement. The Greensboro City Council approved the agreement on Tuesday, June 18th, and currently all of our city staff has signed the document. And I'll defer to Ms. Stadler. Have we received the full, we're still waiting on Greensboro to sign their, but it was approved by their city council. And then just two more quick updates. Our Splashpad is opening on May 24th, 2024. We've been operating smoothly, knock on wood. We estimate that they're averaging about 125 participants daily, and concession stands are doing very well, and, or concession cells are doing very well, and also our all-inclusive or exclusive rentals are doing well, from what I've understood. So thank you to Parks and Rec and our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Cloud, for ensuring the smooth operations of that facility. And then also just to bring note in your agenda packet, please note the year-end budget amendments. And that concludes our report. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Manager Woodard. Council members' reports, pro temp.
Thank you, Mayor. I've only got a couple things. On June 22nd, I attended two-on-two meetings at City Hall with, of course, the mayor and the city manager. On June 29th, I gave greetings and welcome to the Johnson family. They were having a family reunion here in Reevesville. Very nice family. I knew some of the members. That went well. And also on July 4th, I, you know, I'm a Parks and Recreation man, and I went out to the lake the day after the celebration, about 10:30 that morning, and I was amazed at how clean the place was. With that large of a crowd, you would think that you still have some trash and all that kind of stuff out there at the park. But early in the morning, it was crystal clear. Clear. Good job, Mr. Cloud. And that did it.
Council member Coates.
On June 1st, I assisted with the clean sweep at the Cambridge area on Pickle Road for our appearance committee that I represent. And that was about a three-hour ordeal, picking up trash for some of the citizens that live out there on Cambridge Road, or Pickle Road there in the Cambridge area. On June 5th, I tended to have a meeting here with City Manager, Public Works Director on some trout shroud issues. I think we got that resolved. And on June 12th, attended the ribbon cutting at the RSH at the high school for the new lab they have with the computer detailing and showing the human body, which was very interesting. So I guess a maybe interesting part of the curriculum there when I attended. So I thought that was a real, real great piece to add. That concludes mine.
Councilwoman Stobel.
Thank you, sir. On June 13th, that was my Kiwanis meeting at Reevesville Methodist Church. On 14th, Rocket Reevesville downtown was the RDC event. On June 15th, at Market Square was Gump Fiction. That was the van that was playing. And I estimate there was probably 400 people there that night. There were so many things going on around in the county, I was really surprised, but we had a great turnout there. And then from June 19th through the 30th, I was out of town, and when I came back, I immediately tested positive for COVID. So out of all this time, it finally got me, so I had to quarantine for five days. Today, I would like to say that I was very honored to experience the bucket at Splashpad. And that was so much fun, and it was so refreshing. There was 39 people there while I was there, and it tended to stay pretty much that same number. The concession stand was sold out of a lot of things, so that must mean that they are very successful there. But it was a lot of fun, and I challenge any of the council members to go out there and experience the bucket because it was fun.
I'm still going to do it. I just hadn't gotten it done.
Well, I thought that our ice cream social coming up for the chamber might be a good time for the council to get together and meet under the bucket, so.
Councilmember Moore.
I didn't document the things I attended this year around, but I will say that there was a flag raising on Barn Street. I was tasked with inviting everybody, which I dropped the ball on that to the last minute. So I contacted City Manager on July 4th, and Coates Fire Department Police Department showed up at 10 o'clock and was notified at 9:15. So it turned out pretty successful by the last minute. I didn't attend myself, and nobody did, but I apologize for dropping the ball, not telling everybody, but reason came through with the fire department and the police department showing up. They raised the flag, and it was a pretty nice event. I sent it on Facebook.
Councilman Hurst.
Oh, okay. Yes. I attended the Ministerial Alliance End of the Year Cookout in the So I contacted city manager on July 4th, and Coats, Fire Department, Police Department showed up at 10 o'clock and was notified at 9:15. So it turned out pretty successful for the last minute. I didn't attend myself, and nobody did, and I apologize for dropping the ball, not telling everybody, but regional came through with the Fire Department and the Police Department showing up. They raised the flag, and it was pretty nice event, I sent it on Facebook.
Councilman Hurst?
Oh, okay, yes. I attended the Ministerial Alliance End of the Year Cookout in the month of, the month of June, month of last, part of June. And they're taking a break until August, the school starts back. And I also attended the two-on-two meetings. I attended the Beauty of Reevesville, Juneteenth Celebration Downtown, food trucks, really good attendance. I also want to just thank the farmers at the farmer's market for bringing out such nice food items and vegetables. I don't have time to plant a garden, so I go to the farmer's market, and I've been getting some really good stuff there from corn, tomatoes, and watermelons, and you name it. So, I mean, it's real nice. Also, and maybe a pro team will speak about it too, I know that Zion Baptist Church, one of our primary churches in the city, does a lot, have a new pastor there. I haven't had a chance to, chance to meet him yet, but I think he's going to really be a good addition to the community.
Pro Tim?
A new pastor is 38 years old, and he comes to us from Salisbury, North Carolina. We pass his church down there. I think he's done everything. You know, he has a wife and three young children, and he's already located a house here in Reevesville and sold his house down in Salisbury, so I think he's going to be good, not only for Zion Baptist Church, but for our entire city. So I just issue invitation to all of you to, if you have a free Sunday, come on over to Zion and check him out, we're on Pithin Street here in Reevesville.
That's good, thank you. I had about 25 stops, but I'm not going to give all 25, I'm going to give highlights. I was at the Ontomage Table ribbon cutting at Reesville High School, and that was very interesting, Councilmember Coats, to see, to actually see a body with that's, I mean, they went through all stages of it. So it was, it was something, it was exciting. Had opportunity to go to the Friday night concert at the square, that was on 6:15. And at Ontomage Table, it was 6:12. I played the, how would I say this? I was an animal control officer for a brief moment on 6:12 also. I removed a deceased animal from a neighbor's backyard and put it out to the street. Police officers, nor do animal, nor does the animal control remove animals from a yard. And this was an elderly couple, so I did that for them. Did my hard good to do something like that. We visited Raleigh, North Carolina. Representative Pearl celebrated our champions in football, 23 and 23. The Juneteenth Celebration at Market Square on 622. And it was a very interesting ribbon cutting for, I think it was Got Dogs. The lady brought a dog to the ribbon cutting that knew how to do some tricks. And I had an opportunity to get a paw and see some things. I hope that she's going to be very successful with her new venture. And the Fourth of July celebration, I had the distinct honor of welcoming everyone. If I had known they were going to call on me, I might have had a song ready for them on that day. Probably shouldn't have, because it might have run everybody, run everybody away. Okay, that's all I have for my report, and Donna, you here? I mean, Diane. I'll have to tell my wife I've turned into her.
Good evening, everybody. We are, first of all, very busy here, but I'll try to be quick and succinct. Councilwoman Scobal took the words right out of my mouth. I was going to say, I would love to see you meet under the bucket at the Splashpad of Ice Cream Social. Update is coming up. It is Thursday, July 18th, from 4:30 to 7:30. Please make sure that if you are planning to attend, that you do RSVP with us. It is free, you are invited, you should have gotten invitations in your boxes. But I do need a RSVP in a headcount if you're planning to attend. So very excited about that. Paul Beerfoots are sponsor, we're very thankful to them. I think it's going to be a fun time. As always, we're still providing the beer garden at the Concert Series, which has been a lot of fun, especially with the addition of the wine promotion, I think they have been popular. We also have our Angel Volter coming up, which is our new fundraiser for the year, so it's on the third Wednesday in August. We'd love to see you guys out, either play in or volunteer, or just making an appearance. We welcome you to attend that with us. We do have a few ribbon cuttings coming up this Friday. Carolina Strong Roofing at the Chamber at noon. Next Friday at noon, we have one North Star Military Surplus, which is one of your new merchants downtown. That is going to be at noon next Friday. And also, Angels Do Beauty has joined the Chamber, and you may know she is the real cute little beauty salon across from the city parking lot. So if you go out my back door into the parking lot, she's that little bitty building right there on Gilmer. So very excited for Jane. She went out on her own several years ago and has done a great job. And so she's joined the Chamber, and we're going to celebrate her. New Members versus Pizza and Sovereign Insurance Company, next coffee. So remember that we didn't have one in July, we will bring that back in August, and it'll be out at Genesis Ministries, and that's at 9:00 AM. I just wanted to take a couple of really quick other things that are happening. I don't know how many of you are familiar with Dana Trent, and she is a Reevesville graduate. And a lot of people knew her probably as Dana Lumen, but she has written several books, but she recently has a book called Between Two Tractors. And it is about a very difficult life that she had growing up. And it is getting a lot of attention, almost, I mean, really globally. So we're very excited to be bringing her back to Reevesville. And we are planning to have her do a book signing at the Reevesville Business Expo, which we have locked down, will be at the penthouse on October the 24th, which is a Thursday. So I imagine this is going to be a lot of fun, a big event. I'll have more about the book, and we're looking maybe to do a book club. But it, she's very successful, and I love that she is, I think, class of 98, maybe? Reevesville High graduate, so younger, but we're excited to be bringing her back to Reevesville for that. Other things that are happening, the Workforce Development Committee with the Chamber has been meeting. We have really made some headway in partnering with the college and the school system, looking to have a seminar on trying to connect our businesses and industries on internships, because Reevesville is lacking when you look at the rest of the county. The last I heard, we may be two ahead now, but most of the other, the rest of the parts of the county have about 10. And we had zero when this conversation started. So very thankful to the city manager who allowed them to come in and chat, several city departments, and that's kind of gotten us going. But we are going to be having a seminar on that, and I would really like for any of you who are interested in helping us connect that and getting the young people into the workforce as a piece of that. The other thing that we are going to start doing, and I would love to invite you all, so specifically, I'll share with Angela and with Manager Woodruff when we have the details. We're starting a, sort of a field trip program. So we are going to be looking at doing visits where we can go to places like Pella, places like Henneghus, places like Farmina, when it's ready. And we are hoping to take small select groups of Chamber members, business leaders, elected officials, and do some industry tours and some other things. So more info on that coming, but I wanted to kind of put a bug in your ear so that you are aware of what we're doing, because it will be a first-come, first-served, very limited. We're hoping to do them monthly, and we'll have a schedule, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Diane. We'll be moving to the first-floor conference room for a closed session to discuss the acquisition of real property and personnel pursuant to NCGS 143-318.1185 and 6. Do we have a motion to go into closed session? Second? In the discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate you being here tonight. We will not be returning to the chambers. Thank you so very, very much for coming out.